Now read the roll, please let us know you're here by saying aye. Mike Ahern. Carl.
Aye.
Mary Ann.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sue.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
All right, and aye from I am here. Sue, will you continue, since we have six planning board members or full board members here, will you continue to be or be the voting member again for this meeting?
Sure. Yep.
And Steve, please participate fully, but I'll ask you not to vote, so. All right. So, let's review the minutes from our May 20th meeting. Anybody have any edits, corrections for the, those minutes? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve this minute, these minutes for May 20th?
I move, we approve the minutes from the May 20th meeting.
Thank you, Carl. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion on, or any discussion on the minutes? All right, I will read the roll, please, if you wish to approve these minutes, say aye. Mike Ahern.
Aye.
Carl.
Aye.
Mary Ann.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Steve, Sue.
Aye.
And aye from me. All right. Are there any public comments unrelated to tonight's agenda? Right? Moving on to communications received by the board. We have a letter from the Department of Transportation regarding bridge maintenance, I believe, along I-93. An actual holder has involved some lead paint remediation as well on the site. But it sounds like there's potential, depending on what kind of environmental impact the work will have, could result in mitigation funds in Plymouth. Do we have a list of priority projects in the town of Plymouth? Sorry, June, I'm looking at you, but you can't tell that.
I was trying to unmute. Not that I'm aware of. You know, it doesn't. Not for the, for the aquatic mitigation program, right, that's what this is for, so. It might be a question potentially for the Conservation Commission, but. You know, because the aquatic mitigation program is about, usually about, kind of wetland or, you know, related to wetlands permits, so. I don't, I don't know of anything, I don't think our natural resources inventory ever really evaluated that, that I'm aware of, unless there's something in the master plan, but I don't, I don't remember seeing anything.
Yeah. No, it'd be great for us to have a list, just because it's not only DOT that's going to have. Projects, it's just usually if there's armed funds, it'll go to the same town that the impact is happening, unless that town doesn't have the list of funds and it get, kind of goes out. You know, to the region and stuff like that, so. But yeah, again, I'm not, I'm not sure who determines those projects either, so. Any questions or comments about the DOT letter? All right, we'll move on to the, the letter from the architects for the Midstate Healthcare Children's Learning Center that we received. This afternoon, that June passed out at our site walk.
I can give a little quick background to this if you want. So, when the zoning board gave their. Approval for a special exception, at that time, we still had some questions about the water supply because of private well. So they had a condition, really based on my suggestion, I admit, but that, you know, documentation of registration approval by New Hampshire Department Environmental Services for the water supply must be submitted to the planning department before construction begins. I probably didn't think this through very well in terms of, was that possible? And when this planning board came and looked at, on May 20th, the site plan, one of, it was just in the minutes you approved, there was a list of conditions, including following the ZBAs, which picked up that same piece. So, there was a meeting today with Scott Reed in the building inspector. Jeremy from the fire department to go over the building permit application for the renovation work for this project. And they said that they really can't get approval of that CIST water system until. They have the building constructed, you know, the renovations constructed, and then, kind of everything up and running, and that's when they would do the final sort of water test, but they know they have to put in a filtration. System and they have to do a number of things, so what they really want is that to be changed to. Rather than before construction begins, it just should say before occupancy. So as part of a condition of which the building inspector would pick up on too, that they have to have a valid water supply for this type of use prior to occupancy. So I think that's just an administrative change that we can easily do, and I just wanted to let you know about it. Really, the spirit of the condition was to make sure that. They have a working water system that is licensed and adequate for this type of use, and that absolutely will be happening still. It's just about a timing, so they don't want to hold up the building permit. You know. To have that before construction begins.
So I'd like to change that to. Yeah, the spirit of that was to make sure that there is safe water when that building is getting used for the. Purpose that they discussed with us. Do you want, June, do you want a board vote to do that, or I'm fine with it being an administrative change too?
I don't, I think it'd be good for the record, you know, since everybody's here and we can just make a quick, somebody would make a quick motion, just saying approve, changing that to before occupancy.
June, can I ask a quick question? Did the building inspector feel confident that this, the proposed plans would not require sprinklers?
That really, the fire department is looking at that, but they do have a means of egress from every classroom, so then the initial look at it, it probably satisfies that. I mean, you know, they're working with a professional architect who should know those things too, so. That was a piece that, you know, that again, that really is under firelight safety, so if it's required, they'll look into it, and they'll have to have a water system that does, that can sprinkle it.
The only reason I ask is that, you know, putting in tanks and pumps in order to run a sprinkler system may be more expensive than boring into the highway to connect to town water, which would really be the other issue, but. I presume that they will make an educated decision on whatever they need to do, I just didn't know if it was determined if sprinklers would be required at this point.
They haven't, it looks like it won't be, but it, they're, yeah, so, but they'll make, the fire department has to do that review. And just so you know, there is not water available out there. Yeah, the water ends around. I believe, yeah, I'm trying to remember exactly where it goes, but that, that's one reason why it has a well, because there was not town water available on the road.
Okay, for some reason I thought the town water went all the way to Yen Road, but maybe not.
Yeah, or somehow it's not available, anyway.
I think it's only available on the north side of the highway, south side, or sorry, on the south side of the highway, but not the north side, but. With directional boring technology, I think they could get under if they wanted to. I think they already did that for something, I think power lines went under the highway when they did the.
Well, again, they have to work that out with either the state or. They're in touch with Plymouth Village Water and Sewer, because it's got, it does have town sewer, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, Matt, I can see your hands up, I don't know if we necessarily need public input on this, I think it's more just kind of discussion based, so. I'm just going to hold off for right now, so we can move forward with this. Any other discussion or questions about. About this minor amendment to our approval from the last meeting? Would somebody like to make a motion to, to change our site plan review approval condition to say that the. The water system must meet, or must be licensed, I'm fumbling with the words here, prior to occupancy instead of prior to. The, what did we say, before, prior to the building permit?
I'd make that motion.
Thank you, Mike, is there a second?
I second.
Thanks, Carl, any further discussion?
I have just one thing, Rebecca, Matt Yeton's family is out that way, maybe Matt might have something. That he could add after the vote, but that might be interesting for the planning board.
Okay, we do have time for public comments at the end of this, and Matt, I'm not trying to silence you, I'm just trying to move through this quickly, we've already, as I think you were at the. The site walk, we've already been at it for a little while, so. So yeah, so is there any further discussion from the board? All right, I will read the roll. Mike Ahern.
Aye.
Carl.
Aye.
Mary Ann.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sue.
Aye.
And aye from me, thank you. Matt, did you have something to contribute on this, or my guess is it's clarification about where the water and sewer goes? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, that's all, that's all it was, was clarification that the water does stop in front of the old Arlen Farms or the Rock Barn. Right by the, the building right after the payday loan place, that's where our water stops in town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. Committee reports. Mary Ann, anything new and exciting to report from the select board?
Oh, it's exciting there. Actually, the first thing, I know Josie presented, but Steve, you want to talk about the beautification project?
Sure. We had, was it two weeks ago, I think, we went before the select board and had a discussion, and this was kind of building on. Conversations Mary Ann and other people have had over the last couple of years of, is there something we can do to help? Build on what Park and Rec is already doing, maintaining some of our small parks and open spaces. And it started with a conversation again about the roundabout, and we could probably do more with that space, but it led to thinking about the fact that there. With some direction and with some support from the town, it was verbally, that we could be doing some trash cleanup days, we could be doing some other stuff throughout town, not just downtown, so out along Tenny Mountain Highway. And so actually Josie and I are meeting with Larry Gibson tomorrow. As an initial step after the selectmen gave us support to kind of move forward and engage more people in this kind of volunteer committee. We're meeting with Larry to better understand the areas that his staff maintain now, and where he's running into challenges, like where, what areas would be priorities in their eyes that they can't get to? Or, you know, any insights he has before we start asking people to show up and do a downtown cleanup or a Tenny Mountain trash pickup day. But it's really open to kind of go in all the ways that people may want to invest their time, and if we have a ton of people who are willing to take on different activities, we might be able to do a lot, and if there's just a couple of us, you know, we'll do something. So I can bring the board up to speed once there's more to report, but it's really, really brand new.
Thanks, Steve. The only other thing really, we had a public hearing on raising the parking fees. We won't be touching the 30-minute free parking in front of most of the businesses, but the other parking meters going up to a dollar. Steve LaFave, Chief LaFave, did some research on, you know, what other towns charge in the area, and that's, we're definitely low. And so that puts us at a median price, so that went through, so we'll be moving forward with that. That's, that's about it.
Great. In reviewing the minutes, I saw that the Conservation Commission has said that they were going to provide, send a member to our meetings. Do we have, I don't think we've got a Conservation Commission member here this evening to get an update from the Conservation Commission, if any of them are watching from home. We have three alternates, we're allowed to have five, and I would welcome a Conservation Commission member as an alternate, we don't have any full board member seats available at this time. Okay, commercial over. Any other committee reports that anyone else? Knows about, okay. Great, new business, point of view drive drainage easement issue. June, do you have the, the background report on this?
I've been working on it, this is, I'm going to have to do a screen share, and I've got some PowerPoint slides, sorry about that. I do want to point out, we have two guests here, Dan Marion and Christine Marion, who have purchased a property here in town, which they've been. They've been discussing this issue with several people and trying, we're trying to figure it out, and it's taking a fair amount of time, and we don't have the exact answer yet, but we're working on it, so. Let me try to give you some background, all right, so. Hold on a second, get the right. Thing together. I guess because we're on Zoom, this just seems like the best way to. Go about this. To help, help you understand, so, all right. This is related to phase three of the Hiltz-Frontenack subdivision that goes back a number of years. Have to kind of laugh, because I was here when the first few, first, this first came around, my first time I was serving as planner here. But there was phase one, phase two, and phase three, so this is really about phase three, which was approved in December of 2004 for 25-lot subdivisions, so this is really the upper part, if you're aware of Chatteran Lane. And that, that stretch of road, it's the old Frontenac ski area, that, that area. Which I remember skiing out in high school, dating myself. Anyway, the notice of decision has two conditions. One, I'm kind of paraphrasing them a little bit here, just for simplicity, the final miles and drawings were to be submitted. There is an issue about a drainage detention basin off of Greer Road, which is off of Route 3, where. Where the old ski lodge was, I believe, and an easement deed related to that basin, okay? And then they wanted a bond or some kind of letter of credit for, for the construction improvement, so that was December 2004. Since then, you know, the construction happened, the town did have some surety, either a bond or letter of credit. Been trying to sort all this out, and then the upper part is now called point of view drive. The way the plans originally came through and was approved. Was to be a cul-de-sac at the end of that road, but it got built out as a hammerhead, so it's a T shape. So it's almost worth, maybe if you're in the area, take a, take a drive up there on a nice day, see the nice views. But there's no real documentation that we've been able to find about any kind of approval of this change, all right? So I've looked at the registry of deeds, and I've got a couple of slides here to try to show you exactly what this is really for about. But what, it really impacts one lot up there due to a drainage easement, and this is a lot that the, our guests here purchased, so. Best I can tell, and I'm still sorting through some piles of paper. It looks like the town did at some point, I don't know when, maybe first reduced the bond, and either the bond has lapsed or the town released it. So we don't have any remaining financial security for this subdivision, I don't think, all right? I haven't seen that, so this is Parker Street, Chatteran Lane, and the main lot that we're in question is this one in the top, so this is shown as a cul-de-sac, you know, as a, as a round lollipop kind of structure. This is a plan that we found here in the files. One problem I'm finding is we don't have any signed plans here in Town Hall that I can find, but this is that area at the top, so this part I made the sloppy red circle on. With this lollipop, there was, looks like there was supposed to be a detention pond, some kind of little, so a depression in the middle of it, so if you think about like the roundabout in the center of town here downtown. If you imagine like a little pond in the middle to capture the drainage, it has to have an outflow. So it looks like that dark line where the blue arrow is there, would be the pipe coming out of this detention pond, and with an outlet draining onto what's in this picture called Lot 7, all right? But then we go to the registry of deeds, and this is what's actually at the registry for the signed approved plan, so that part did happen. And that's, that's required in order to have any of these lots be sold for deed description, so the shaded area is what we call a drainage easement on. For the Lot 7 of the subdivision, and we call it a different lot number with the tax map parcel. And so that pipe that would come out of this lollipop cul-de-sac would, needs this shaded area to drain into, but it didn't get built that way, it's a T-shaped. There is no detention, there is no detention pond, there is no drainage structures going into this lot. So with their buying this lot recently, they've been asking, like, what is this easement, because it takes up a bit of an area of the property. It restricts sort of a building envelope area, it, you know, extends past the setback into the property, the property does slope, slope. To the northwest a bit, and so they've been asking, can we have this easement extinguished, because there's no need, no, no purpose for it, because there is no drainage for it. But the town doesn't own the road, it's owned still by the developer. So there's been some, some conversations, I guess, but it's come back around to the planning department, planning board, to try to figure out, is there a formal way we can address this? All right, so what do we do? I want to still finish going through some of the files to really double check and make sure we don't have any financial security, if we did, we could then call a bond. Ask to, you know, take that money and have as-built plans done, hopefully. But I'm not, I doubt that's going to be able to be happened, so we have no funding, no money, and we don't own the road, so it really is up to the developer to create as-built plans, but. There really isn't a lot of incentive for them to do that at this point, the best I can tell, all right? So I just wanted you to be aware of this, and, and the Marion's were invited to come tonight, just to give, hear this update. But I did look into this a little bit further, and it looks like probably the best thing we can do is ask. The planning board to at least make a statement in the absence of a plan, but I, I can write up something, we'll have to figure out what the text would be. And that we have to notify the abutters, because by law, we'd have to have a public hearing, so then the abutters in the area up there to just say, hey, this, you know, the planning board recognizes that mistakes were made, that there, this wasn't built as it, as it was, you know, but they. Planning board approves sort of the concept of this hammerhead and the release of any drainage easement there. We can't release the easement, because we don't own the road and hold the easement, so, but at least it gives the owners of that lot some security that. Given how it was built, eventually, this road will probably become a town road, that, you know, the town isn't going to go back and rebuild it to have that cul-de-sac and have that easement. Then they have some sense that they can go ahead and kind of use that area of the easement up there a lot. Does that make sense?
I do have a question about the. Change in construction, and I seem to recall our fire chief in the town that I used to live in had strong opinions about hammerheads versus cul-de-sacs, being that. Fire engines, it was very difficult for them to turn around on a hammerhead, whereas, and cul-de-sacs had to have kind of a minimum radius for trucks to be able to make it around safely, so I'm kind of curious if, if we're going to consider. Accepting or making a change that acknowledges that there's a hammerhead instead of a cul-de-sac. Should we seek input from the fire chief on that to ensure that there's adequate safe life, you know, adequate provisions made for a truck to safely get in and out, or multiple trucks to get in and out safely?
I can definitely check with the fire department on that. There is a, there is a memo that we found from. Oh, I don't have it in front of me, what the year was, that actually we came from the developer's engineer to the town, asking for it to be signed off by the highway manager, the fire chief, and I think maybe the town administrator, if I remember right. But it was never signed, that we, we don't have any documentation that it was ever signed, and furthermore, it's the planning board that would have to approve any change to a plan, not the fire chief. You know, they don't have the authority to make that change, only the planning board can do that, and I did check with the town's attorney about that. So he's like, well, they can't sign it, even if they did sign it, it's like, well, they didn't have the authority, but we can check and make sure that the fire department. Is okay with the current situation up there.
It's kind of following along with Phil's question, is, you're just thinking about if the town does adopt this road. Is it up to town specs, and is there going to be a drainage issue if that easement is lost from that property and that we're going to have to figure out some other way to get water off of that? If, if a hammerhead is not appropriate, or, I don't know, I'm just, I'm kind of thinking, if this is going to become a town road, what will that look like, and do we have adequate drainage?
I guess my question, yeah, getting, getting to that question is, do, you know, are we going to need to reconstruct it and create a drainage issue, you know, drainage structure there? Or require the owner of the road?
I guess, my sense is, I can double check with the highway manager. To take a look at it and give us input, if he's got any concerns about with what's there, are there any drainage issues that he sees that might be problematic in the future? I think my sense from just going up there is what's there would work, you know, I don't see any erosion or anything like that, that's causing, and it's been there long enough to, and there's other houses in the area, you know, that there's enough development there to kind of. Have any real runoff come to emerge and be, be an issue there, but. You know, I think the real, which I'm trying to find a way to at least. You know, we can't, we can't release the easement, because we don't own the road, and, but we can at least give an indication, we've reviewed this and would accept a hammerhead, I guess that's the best we can do. I do think that, you know, if, if the town was to ever take this over, we do have a road acceptance policy, we're just doing that now with Martin Estates Road, which is a very clear step-by-step of formal request is made, and then. We collect fund, money, money to have our town engineer do an inspection of the road and come up with any deficiencies, and then the contractor, you know, the developer, owner of the road has to fix them. We have to observe those, that construction changes, your final sign-off, and then, you know, the owner of the road has to prepare a deed, we have to do a title search, you know, so we collect money from the developer to do that, all those different steps, so. I think if in the future that we found any deficiency, was we have a way to, to go back and look at it. But whether that easement would still be there or not, you know, I don't know.
So it sounds like you need to do a little more research, and I think, I think it would just be helpful for us to hear what the fire chief and the.
Highway manager.
Highway manager, thank you. What they have to say, and then, and then we can think about a publicly known, public notice, or public hearing that's noticed in July.
I mean, in addition, I think, you know, we have some responsibility to go back to the developer as part of this, saying, hey, this was, there's this condition of approval of as-built plans, and you never gave them to us, so. It's a little bit hard to find some, you know, it's not like there's a certificate of occupancy that we can withhold or something like that, it's a little hard to go back and find a way to, to do it, but hopefully we can find a way to get some cooperation on that and, and move this ahead. I mean, and it's going to be in everybody's best interest, because eventually this should become, there's enough build-out up there to have this, you know, when, when you approve a new road in a subdivision like this, the idea is that, once it's built out, the town sort of accepts some responsibility to. Hopefully, you know, take it over in the, in the, in the future. It's just there's been so much time that's gone by, and that's something we should think about of just sort of. Limiting the amount of time somebody has to build out something like this and follow those steps, so. But that's the future, not the past, looks like Mike Ahern has his hand up, Rebecca.
Yes, so, let's see. Three years ago, the Bissans came to the select board, asking about the process for the town to take over the road. With concerns about the plowing in the winter. And. But it was determined that. The person plowing it was actually doing a pretty good job, better than probably what the town, how they set their plows. But there is a, a bond still on that road that I know of, and that's what keeps the developer plowing, from what I understand. I just don't think the, I'm not sure how much the bond is, and whether that would cover the amount of expense it would be to bring that road up to town specs. Because that's usually what it needs to be, is town specs before it is taken over. But I'm not sure how much the property tax bill for each of those landowners would increase. But I'm not sure how much the property tax bill for each of those landowners would increase. Going from a private road to a town road, whether that might offset the cost that the town could take it over, which. Seems like the right thing to do to me. But there is a cost to the town.
Yeah, I'm curious. Is there a decrease in the, in the assessed value of those properties? Because it's not on a town maintained road. I, I'd be surprised if there was.
I don't believe there is, but I can, I can ask the assessor about that, but I don't think there is. I think you get a deduction if there's a unpaved road, but not a. Cause again, a private road should be up to specs based on the process there. So I don't think there's any change in valuation.
Mike, just from my perspective, I think it's kind of a, it's kind of unfair that people who live on private roads. I think my, my perception is that they pay full boat, you know, they pay the full taxes that everyone living on public roads pays. And they don't get the maintenance that people who live on public roads get. So it's, you know, I, I, I think there's a level of fairness to accepting. Roads as well as, as long as they're built to, to town specs.
Yeah, oh, I would agree. I would agree. And it's, it's just the road wasn't. I don't know where the ball was dropped on that. I've just, it was pre, before I got involved, I know that.
All right. Well, I think this is really helpful to see kind of the consequences of. Planning board actions and, you know, what happens to something like a subdivision instead of fifteen years down the road. So it's good to see the reason why we're concerned about doing development agreements and. Collecting bonds and things like that, that this is to help prevent issues further, you know, further in the future. So helping our, our planning board members of the future right now.
It also seems to me that, you know, when we issue a bond, we should probably put conditions on the, the bond that. Authorize when it should be released. You know, such as, you know, the, the, the bond shall be held in place. Or, you know, some financial sure, surety should be kept in place until either the town has accepted or the town accepts the road. Or, you know, some other resolution homeowners association can accept it or something along those lines.
I, I would want to add one thing. I think there are a number of people that live on Chattering Lane that probably. At one time or another, if not all the time, probably feel that their road is not plowed as well as, as others. So that was the concern.
Any other discussion, comments from the board on this one?
Rebecca, we do have the property owners of that lot on here. I don't know if you would want to offer them a chance to.
Sure, yeah.
See if I missed anything in that, in my coverage, because they've, they've put a lot of time into this too. And I, I do respect, they've been very patient and helping to look into this too, so.
Yes, either Christine or Dan, if you would like to speak, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I want to thank the board and especially June for all the effort that she put into looking into the situation for us. And just as a background, I am also a professional planner. So I, I guess I have a little bit more knowledge than typical property owners. So I, I really applaud June and her efforts in, in trying to really dig out the history of this. And I have to say, she's been, been great and a lot, had a lot of patience with myself and my husband with all the questions that we had asked about this. Our other concern in addition to the impact of the drainage easement on the location of a house, that's, it's, that's not as much of an issue. As, as a concept plan that you saw shows a pipe sort of discharging in, in the middle of that, that property. So we're more concerned about if that drainage would ever go in, where that outfall would be and how that would impact. The water, you know, and if we're gonna put a house on that property would be close to the street and how that may impact, you know, the house and, and the water discharging toward that house. So that's more of a concern than actually the easement itself and, and the impact on, on the house. So it's more the, if, if that would go in, a pipe would go in, where would that discharge actually be and how would that affect, you know? Again, the drainage against the house.
And I'll just add that, thank you June for all your help and, and assistance. And we've been talking to our builder weekly. And right now, the building envelope is set outside the easement, just because we're being super cautious about this. And if there's any change to that easement being terminated or extinguished. We can ask the builder to move the house closer to the setback line. But that's all a matter of a timing thing. We don't know when groundbreaking is gonna start.
All right, thank you.
So I guess we'll keep working on it and be, to be continued and.
June, I'm looking at the tax, at our current tax maps with the. Overlay and I know they're not a hundred percent accurate, but it does, it appears that there might be a driveway in that cul-de-sac. So. I, I think that what's there, it looks like it might be a challenge to, it might be a challenge to put in a cul-de-sac based on the homes that have been built already.
Yeah, if you, if you have a chance to go up there and just take a look at it, it's kind of helps explain it too. And it's, you know, it is pretty high and dry. It's not, I don't think it's, the drainage up there is ever gonna be that big a problem, but I'm not, I'm not an engineer, so.
Yeah, I think it does, it sounds like we're wanting, we want to see if the hammerhead is sufficient. I think that makes the most sense. If it's not, if the town's gonna put a cul-de-sac down in, that needs to. The drainage needs to be considering. Homes and plans for homes in that area so that all of a sudden there's not a discharge pipe that's, you know, blasting at somebody's foundation.
I would, I would guess that the home that's on. Subdivision, why it doesn't show. Shows map thirty, thirty-two point one-one. It looks like the house is in, within the setback of the, of their original plan. But they're, they're never to scale, so.
Right, so to be continued on this one. Are we good to move on or do you folks have other things on this one?
One last thing I'd ask, I'd add is that I did already try to recruit Christine Marion to join the planning board at some point when they, when they get their house built.
I'd be glad to help out any way I can. I'm retired, so happy to do so.
All right, we'll keep working at this hopefully and get it solved, get something together and soon, all right, moving on.
All right, so next up we have a discussion about site plan review, subdivision regs, application forums and application process. And I do just realize that June said a lot on her plate and we've also already had, you know, we had an hour meeting before we started this one. So I want to respect everyone's time. How much do you have for us this evening on the site plan regs, et cetera, June?
Um, I've got a, oh, what did I just, there we go. I again did some PowerPoint slides. I mean, I hope that's all right. I can, I just trying to gather some of my thoughts here about. Looking at subdivision site plan review. I know we've talked a bit about zoning, but we hadn't dug into this stuff very much yet. So let me. Go. All right, I did show you this slide a few months ago. I just kind of wanted to go through quickly. There's two parts, subdivision site plan review regulations are very similar. We've been working mostly with the site plan review lately. My concern about the subdivision regulations is not so much for simpler two lot subdivisions. Like we've had up on, was it Texas Hill, old or new Hebron Road? Coming up, there's two more two lot subdivisions on Texas Hill Road coming up for the next planning board meeting. But anyway, you know, you, you basically, we, we get applications. We review them to see if they're complete and that gives, to see if there's enough information there for you guys as the planning board. To review the application against the design standards and make a decision. All right, that's what, that's what we do. After that decision, as I've said before, we do a lot of these conditions of approval, development agreements, the bonds, that kind of stuff. We've been doing a little bit better job, I think, or diff, you know, more consistent with that. I do want to say that this stuff takes a lot of time and the record keeping is important. And what we just discussed for this other subdivision is a great example of, you know. Clarity and the, I mean, I have to say on the, on this one we just discussed, and there's some files that look like a deck of cards were just shuffled. I mean, I'm sorting through papers like trying to figure it out. I like puzzles, but you know, at some point, it takes a lot, the amount of time it's taking concerns me a bit. And so I'm trying to think about ways we can be a little bit tighter. You know, fewer conditions of approval would be good too. So I think that's something to make sure that all the information's there, that we have some clarity. The same time we get pressure, we want people, you know, developers want to move fast and that's good customer service, good economic sort of development planning too. Is to be accommodating, protect the town, follow our rules, but not slow things down. So, you know, we have deadlines for when applications come in, but we got one after the deadline just a couple of days ago. And I was like, well, we can still get the butter notices out on time because we have legal requirements of how many days. I think it's ten days prior to a meeting. We have to get the notices out at least ten days prior, but we still had that timeline. So I'm like, well, yeah, you missed the deadline, but so what? We can still go with it. So you'll see that applicant, you know, so we try to be accommodating the best we can to not, not, you know, slow things down. Why not? Just let's keep going at it. So. I've been looking over our subdivision and our site plan review regulations, the subdivision regulations last updated twenty, twenty twenty-two. So there's, you know, probably some changes and administrative sort of state statutes that we want to make sure we're up to date on. I think there's a few areas of some things that probably should be changed. But the application requirements, you know, again, that list is there, really there to help you determine if, if the information's. All there to make a review of it. And when you do that review, it's really against the section of the regulations called the design standards. So I would encourage all the board members to really go back into the regulations and read through, like when you see a plan, an application. And you look at the design standards, can you say yes or no? It meets the standard. And that's where, you know, it's sort of a gradient of what, what's acceptable. We have to figure that out site by site. In some areas, you know, drainage is more of an issue than others. Those kinds of things. But I see areas in those regulations that are very vague and are hard to say yes or no to. So I think some more clarity, specificity. It also helps developers when they're trying to design something to know what we want, to have a little bit better. You know, more, more clear statements about what we want and, and how they should be designing these things. I think that could help with being more efficient in their design work. And then when it comes to the planning board, it'd be more quickly be able to say, yeah, that works, that meets the standards or, or not, all right. In particular, I think we really need to look at what we call the road design standards. Because again, you know, there's new, new materials, new options. There's better planning that sometimes we may not need as wide of a road as we are, we used to in the past. Consumes a lot of land, making sure we have the right base materials and, and wearing courses asphalt. And, and curbing drainage, everything else in that road design standard. So DOT has some, some guidance on, I've been looking at of like. Suggested minimum standards for rural subdivision streets, making sure that we have those kinds of things in there. So there's a lot more specificity to it, although I had to laugh because I was thinking about it and I realized there. What I saw from their website was I think from two thousand and three, so it's not that much updated, more updated, that has some more details. And I certainly want to hear from board members as you look at the regulations. Anytime you're like, this doesn't make sense or I don't understand this, let me know because then I can also either help explain it or say, hey, we need to give more clarity. The other thing about was when, again, thinking about what we've just talked about. The timeline to complete new roads and other improvements, we do have some statements in the subdivision regulations about that. But we don't do a good job, I think, and based on past history to really push that along. Sign some kinds of development agreements to make sure that the developer knows. They may have three years to build this road. And that's why we have the bond, because if we let these things go fifteen years. You know, think the road's gonna start to fall, you know, get worn down and drainage issues will appear. You know, we want it, we want to get, you kind of want to go in and build it and be done within a sort of amount of time. Clearly that takes money. And the economy can change, you know, we can, that's probably in some cases what's happened, you know, in the, you can't, in the low, when. You can't sell the lots that you thought you were gonna do to get the money back, wasn't it, as in the developer. But that's needs to be part of the discussion, I think. Certainly the construction, making sure we get deeds and as-built plans for roads. Because I think that's another piece that. Just to be able to establish ownership and move more quickly and smoothly to maybe the town accepting roads at times. Site plan review regulations, again, you have, they were last, they're a little bit newer, reside, January twenty-seven, but they're twenty oh seven. And administrative things, application requirements, same kind of idea. Again, same kinds of lack of clarity is what I'm seeing in it. I think within the site plan review regulations, I wanted to get a little feedback from you guys as to the scope of review that comes up. We struggle with this a bit because it's that, you know, how do we interpret these things? They, you know, it's right now, the regulations say any change of use basically. That substantially different, material different, materially different. What do those mean and who determines it? All right. So I do know there's been a few things, you know, but when you have a retail site that maybe turns into a. A food service or, you know, and then wants to go back to a retail site, you know, ten years later, how does that work? You know, is it gonna go, we, we want to encourage adaptive reuse of our building. So I think that this is an area we could be a little more flexible and not require site plan review as much, as long as there's enough parking and that kind of thing. And consider asking staff to make some of those judgments. You also have to remember that anytime I make an administrative decision here, you know, saying, no, that doesn't need site plan review. That can be challenged, that can be appealed. There's usually a thirty day appeal of that. Or if I say it does need site plan review, the owner of the site could be like, no, I don't think so. Try to save time and expense, but we don't want to get in those appeals too much. So I just think that finding a better way to specify when it, when it's triggered would be a good approach. Same thing about expanding the use, you know, the one and two are kind of similar on this list and kind of who determines that. And then this number three, a hundred square foot is addition is certainly not very big. So. You know, I think setting, just determining it just by square footage, sometimes like a, a porch entry addition. Is it really gonna change things too much? Is it really gonna impact parking, water, sewer, drainage, that kind of thing? We need to kind of consider maybe tying, you know, one, all of these elements together to give it a little bit better sense of. What we're looking for as being substantially different. Quantitative qualitative requirements and defining that better. Again, to help encourage, especially some of our smaller business owners in town to maybe have it be more of. A quick review or something like that, that. That the, that, that will, that will benefit them and not, and also save planning board time. So we're not, you know, because these things can also get a bit of, of an expense for people too, in some cases. So I thought, you know, do we want to set up the sort of a committee to try to work on this with me? I would, wouldn't mind having some help. I mean, again, having lots of extra meetings is hard, but. Asking some people to do some homework on their own and report back and, and in a month or two would be great. But really the second bullet here, anything you guys can send me an email or mark up a copy of your regulations, anything you're not understanding would be good to know. Really read over our regulations, look at other towns. I'd like to reach out to Lakes Region Planning Commission to see what they, what kind of support, maybe a help they can give us on this kind of a project. Cause it's not, it's not a small thing to write, rewrite the regulations and because there's a lot of legalities and tying it to our, say, statutes and things like that. But I think it's something we should probably be considering. You know, I know we've talked about zoning amendments and these things, but this is kind of, you know, I've been here now a few months and I just feel like there's some places where this stuff can, can be a little bit better on. Can, in conjunction with this, we here with Town Hall, Jules and myself and Carol, who does the assessing work. And handles a lot of the applications and Scott Whedon, who's now the building inspector. We've been reviewing for a couple of weeks now, all of our application forms. Because they're like multiple pages and they're kind of all set up in an old way where we wanted people to kind of handwrite out a narrative, a whole page. We have this page, it's basically lines and it's just extra paper. We're trying to modernize that a little bit, make them shorter, just in terms of the number of paper and say, hey, you know, type up a narrative and you just do it in a word processor. Attach it kind of thing, because that's, that's more how we see things now. We also are looking at application fees. I think it's been some time since. We're also looking at application fees, I think it's been some time since, but those, I guess, are approved by the select board. So we're gonna at some point in the summer, go into the select board to suggest some changes, similar to the parking fees, or some updates to perhaps building permit application fees, subdivision site plan review application fees, zoning board fees. Part of looking at the fees that I'm really kind of trying to consider, kind of on, there's no, there's no, you know, an average is hard to do, hard to take in a way, but, you know, we, you do it by the right number of lots or a number of square footage that of a new development is typically how those things get calculated. But, you know, if you get a big building like Market Basket, I don't know what they paid for application fees, but by our standards, it could have been a lot. And then I want to stick a file storage fee of like 10 bucks per application. So we can start buying some more file cabinets and help my, my paper problem here in the office. So anyway, so those are the things I've been looking at. I wanted to run them by you, I will stop sharing. I'm just kind of looking for some feedback from the board of what's been working and what hasn't been. Again, this isn't something we're gonna solve next month, but I hope you can see, see where my thinking is on it.
Go ahead, Phil, sorry, I was unmuteing myself.
June, I really appreciate your hard work on this and I know how hard it is. I, I do think that our site plan review, I would like to see some, some level of criteria that we establish in our site plan review standards, I guess, or maybe it goes in the zoning ordinance, I forget. But I do think that, you know, having a, you know, a modification for existing site plans makes sense. You know, where we only ask for the elements of the plan that are changing and they can be attached to the existing approved site plan. You know, I think obviously any, any new business where none exists currently or where there's no application on file, there's no site plan on file, I think would require a full site plan review. And I, and I think that there's probably like an intermediate level as well, too, but I forget when we'd use that. Sorry. And then the other, the other resource that I was, when you were talking about roads, UNH has a good road standard that we could also use as a resource for construction of private roads. And going along with that, we might want to consider in our subdivision regulations that if someone's proposing a private road, we might ask them to create a needed lot for that road as, following the street plat protocol. So that basically it's already an independent lot, so that if the, if the town chooses to take it over, there's no requirement to do it, you know, the deed research and subdivide to create that road, it would already be done with the subdivision. So those are my thoughts, just what came to mind after listening to your great list.
I know we've been talking about an administrative site plan review for those minor applications that are, you know, a change of use. It's enough of a change of use that it needs some sort of review, but not so much, that it does end up being a burden to the applicant. So trying to figure out what the criteria is and who makes the decision if it doesn't need to go to the planning board.
And I think we have to, I, I mean, this is where I gotta get back into statute, there's so many statutes. Guide all this stuff, but for some reason, I'm thinking that it may need town meeting approval to allow staff to do some of the administrative review. I can't remember that, I have to, I didn't look that up yet. Because it really, the authority to grant for subdivisions and site family view is to the planning board. So if that gets shifted to some, you know, for certain threshold of projects gets shifted to staff, then I think that has to be approved by the town, if I remember right, but I'll check on it.
Mike? You're on mute.
So I believe June was asking if there's anybody that's willing to work with her on going through site plan regulations, maybe potential changes. And I'd be willing to meet every once in a while to, to work with her on that.
Anyone else wanna jump in and?
I'd be willing to help out if I could as an alternate, you know, to do, meet with her occasionally.
I would also be willing.
And I should be available occasionally to help out as well.
That seems like a good group size there.
Yeah, and again, this isn't something, and we're gonna start tomorrow. It's more, I guess I would ask you guys, if you're really, the four of you, if you're really willing to, you know, take a deeper dive and do some, some light reading through the regulations and just, if you want extra copies to mark up, you know, then, you know, more than happy. You can have a copy that you could, you know, your own copy and one to just highlight or scribble on, that's what I do. And kind of say, this doesn't make sense, or make just some notes as we go, as you go along, that would be, and then we can share that. That's usually a good way to kind of get input, so.
I think it's also helpful to go through the master plan and just kind of scan through where subdivision regs and site plan regs come up and just see what kind of we're thinking as a board and as a community about how to support some of the vision of the master plan into some of our regulations.
Yeah, the other part of that is that the, the master plan is kind of the guiding principles, but there is usually authorization in the zoning ordinance that specifies what the planning board does have authority to do in terms of subdivisions and site plans. So we probably have language in our zoning ordinance that empowers us specifically to do specific things. So it's, it's important to be aware of those as well. There, there are some things that are in statute and there are some things that are in the zoning ordinance, but kind of together, those things form the authorization for the planning board to act in those capacities.
I think the one thing that we know needs to go, well, there's multiple things that need to happen to both the subdivision and the site plan regs. But because of the subdivision on Fairgrounds Road that then got sent to state, got appealed that, all the way to the Supreme Court. We do, when we do amend the or update them, we need to put the word wetlands in there, wherever it says natural resources, natural resources, including wetlands. So it's kind of a fine detail. It was upheld at the Supreme Court level, the natural resources include wetlands. But it's a good idea for us to have those in there as well.
The other thing that actually that falls on our shoulders that I think a lot of planning words don't really think about very much is earth excavation and those, those come up too, but those are our responsibility as well to review. They, they, they're kind of like a site plan, but you know, if anybody's doing gravel pit, they're supposed to be permitted under earth, earth excavation regulations that are dealt with specifically as in their own, in their own RSAs. And the big issue there is, if I recall, you know, how you deal with closure and sureties, because if, if someone opens up a gravel pit and starts excavating, there can be very dangerous conditions that if not closed properly, can create erosion and or safety hazards with steep slopes. So, you know, a closure plan usually involves grading and seeding and, you know, there are costs involved in that, too. But not, not to add to our burden, but we should keep that in the back of our mind that once we get through this, we should at least look at if we have anything on, on our books about earth excavation and how we can deal with that.
The one other thing that the planning board can have adopted is driveway regulations. And there's some really, I think for years, I've been an advocate for getting that together to give some standards for when you can have a driveway tile tie into a town road. You know, usually it's pretty straightforward, but we see a lot of driveways getting wider and wider. And that can, you know, we lose sidewalk in the downtown area when that happens and we, you know, there's, there's some good safety reasons for that, but also drainage and really making sure we have the right size culverts when people connect, so having standards for that. We do have a driveway permit process, but it's kind of like you go get it. As long as Joe, the highway manager says it's okay, and you know, they file the permit and he takes a look at it and signs off on it, then, then you're good to go. So. You know, over time, sometimes culverts fail and we, but so that'd be another piece, too, but one thing at a time.
Right, anything else? On this?
Okay, well, I get in touch, Mike, Sue, John and Carl, thanks, and we can, we can plug ahead of this, from time to time, report back. All right.
That's great, thanks, everyone. All right, unfinished business and other business from members of the board. Anyone else have any unfinished or other business?
Board member, if board members have something, I let them talk first, but.
I, I have something that I just wanted to bring up real quick about how we've been setting up our public hearings, how we've been accepting all the applications or doing, talking about whether applications are complete. Each application and then doing all of the public hearings. I'm finding that to be a little bit disconnected, we sort of shifted that because that's kind of the guidance we're getting from our bylaws. But to me, I feel like I'm having to shift gears so much from different projects that it's getting kind of confusing for me. So with everybody's okay, I'd like to go back to accept the application is complete and then move on to the public hearing, unless, unless folks really like the new, the, the way we've been doing it the past couple of months.
Support that. It provides continuity for, you know, if you're, if you're already on a topic, you know, it makes sense to accept it and then go into a public hearing.
The biggest challenge I find is, yeah, I find it's challenging to get an applicant to talk just about the completeness of the application. So it's, it's easier to give a general presentation and have it kind of flow that way. So.
Can, can I ask a question that's somewhat related to process along this, these lines? There are times when it can be rushed to review an application, although I guess lately we've had really good staff review to inform our decisions, but does anyone feel that it would make sense to have our, to change our policy to state that unless specifically requested, acceptance and approval are not likely to happen in the same meeting? So that you have, you know, if you accept it one night, you can open the public hearing, but you'd almost have to continue it a month to allow not only the board to process, but process it, but for a butters and the public to understand what's happening before the planning board is asked to make a decision on that.
Yeah, I think I, I agree with you. I think we've been trying to move towards something, or I've been trying to move us towards something like that a little more. But there are certainly applications that are so straightforward that there's really no need to take more than, more than one evening to do it. So trying to balance those two things, and I think we need to just really have that discussion as a board with each application to see, like, if we have a lot of questions, it's in the best interest to not, for the future, to not have all those conditions. So trying to get as much of those things built into the plans themselves, so. And I think, I think we're doing an even better job in the past couple of months. It really just making sure we're taking our time and asking the right questions, so. Yeah.
Without changing our policy, it's, it's kind of in our hands, you know, if we, if we get an easy application and we want to approve it, the night we accept it, we can do that. But, and you know, if we, if we're not confident and we want to continue there, and we can also do that. I mean, my, the, the proposal would be that, you know, we would, we would put in our bylaws that, and, and put on the applications that we, we would not normally approve an application on the, if it was accepted unless we received, you know, a waiver request for expedited review or something along those lines, which is what we had done in the past, or what, what I had done on a previous board. So, you know, continuing the way we do allows us to either approve the same night or continue it for another date. And that's okay, too. You know, it doesn't seem like it's an issue right now, but, you know, when, when things get busy, it creates kind of a negative experience for someone to come in and expect approval the same night something's accepted.
Mike? You're still, you're on mute.
It's difficult for, for an applicant to bring in their engineer and surveyor. It can get very expensive, so if there's not a, a real need to split it up, I would, I would hate to put one more hurdle in front of them. If it's clear cut, they follow the rules, they, they've talked to our planner, June, and, and have all their ducks in a row. I'd be more apt to try and make the process easier, rather than for everybody to forget everything that we just discussed and then relook at it two weeks later or four weeks later. So it's just my, my thinking, it, it's expensive for them. And we've had so many applicants over the years that have, you know, interest rates are going up. You know, the, the window of building is, is shrinking. And so it's, you hear it over and over and over, so.
I agree with you, and at the same time, I, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, the decisions we make are good decisions, because we only get one opportunity to make these decisions. And, and oftentimes, you know, having some time to contemplate, you know, the potential implications of the, of a decision can, can help us come to a better long-term decision for the town. But, you know, I do think, to, to June's credit, though, she has been doing an excellent job preparing us and reviewing the information upfront, and that's something that I, I, I didn't have on the board where, where this was our policy. So I think, you know, with the high level of review we're getting, I'm comfortable moving forward without that. I just wanted the board to have a discussion about it and be confident that we're all doing this as well.
I, I would also add, you know, if we're getting the applications almost a week ahead of time, as we've been doing, and we have that time to review ahead of time, and June is providing those reports. It is often possible to move forward. However, there are times when significant, significant new information appears all of a sudden, either because of a butters or conversation, or because last minute changes are made. And obviously, in those cases, it might be good to kind of mull it over for another month before making a decision. But having that time ahead of time, a week ahead of time to actually look at these and get that report as well, I mean, in many cases, it is possible to make that decision.
Sue?
I feel like we're at a pivotal point here and everything that June brought up, this all is gonna tie in with that. She prepares us very well and she gets the information to us so we can make the decisions that we make. Like everyone said, there are times when things are gonna hang us up a little bit more and we may need a little bit of time. Maybe we need something that states we can take that time, but I just feel like this, changing this is gonna come along with helping June with all of the, the stuff that she's asking for help with. But I agree with Mike, I mean, time is of the essence for a lot of these people, too.
Mike?
And we do, there's many applicants that have come forward and we've continually put them off for a month on purpose, and it's been by design. When Home Depot came, when Lowe's came, Market Bet, there, it's just so many parts to put together that it, it, no one expected it to happen in one meeting. Everybody expected several, so we do both. And I think the planning board has done it, and Rebecca, you've done a great job over the past three or four years handling some really tough applications, so.
Thanks. June?
I guess I would just, I think everybody's making good comments here. And I will, you know, one of my goals here is making, from hearing from a few planning board members when I first started is, you know, it doesn't work well for you guys to get things on Wednesday or Thursday, you know, right before the planning board meeting, trying to get that stuff to you on the Friday before. It's not gonna always be possible, but as much of it, so, you know, and in one package, so you know, you kind of have that. So like John said, it gives you that chance to look at it, take a drive-by. You know, the dragonfly one that we dealt with, that was a lot for me to write up that staff report because it was very confusing and very preliminary. But the staff report I wrote got to the, to Eric Miller. And then they just did this Herculean effort in like a few days, pulling together better pla, a better plan and delivering it that, you know, so that was a last minute thing. I think you guys did a good job of sort of accepting that and helping him to move in a timely fashion. But yet having the visit today helps you to see it hopefully, and now can move ahead. So I guess every case is different and I can tell you that most of the So I guess every case is different and, um, I can tell you that most of the time. The, when we are having the conversations with the applicant, which we have many, it's like, I gotta get this started, you know, yesterday. Um, and I'm always like, oh my word, you know, I, I've been at this enough to know like, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's like, you know, of course they want to get going on. Of course they don't want to have their, their design professionals at every meeting. Nor should we, you know, that we need to be considerate of that. That's good economic development to try to be accommodating. And I think, um, we can do that and we are doing that now. Um, so, uh, you know, but. Oftentimes when they're like, we want to go, you know, start construction tomorrow. Then, you know, three months go by and it's like, well, where are you? Um, Aroma Joe's is a good example of that. You approved it pretty quickly. Um. And I've been got a phone call now on Monday with the developer, kind of like, where'd you go? You know, we had. We set some timelines on that that they haven't met. So we got to go back and kind of look at that too, because they were like ready to go. So things change in the economy. You know, it's obviously right now. It's a weird time for building materials and. Design professionals are getting really busy. Contractors are busy, I guess. So, um, staffing shortages, who knows? It's a weird time, but I think the best you can do is just become, you guys always have 65 days to make a decision. So if you need that time, take it. Don't let me push you into it too fast if you're not comfortable.
I think we've been doing a good job at sort of gauging which is quick and which isn't. And you look at the Aroma Joe's, they came to us with some, you know, non-binding preliminary discussion, which. In many cases, not all cases, um, helps a lot so that they can, you know, we can bring up the things that we tend to bring up in site plan review. Process. So, so that also helps too. So maybe before they're ready to present the full case, we can talk about drainage and sidewalks and things like that. They're going to come up anyway. So.
If I understand Phil's suggestion correctly, um, he's trying to give the planning board. Uh, a lot of options just based on what presented with. Uh, not to make a hard and fast rule to, uh, have one meeting and then put them off to another meeting. But just to let them know that if that's really the case, let them, let the, um, applicants know ahead of time that it could happen. But it may not, it may get all done in one meeting and that's certainly the goal. But if it doesn't happen that way, uh, at least they had advanced warning.
Can we just simply tell them when they submit the application?
I mean, we do have those conversations saying, you know, they're like, will this get approved next Thursday? And I'm like, I don't know. It's up to the planning board. Um, you know, I say, well, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. And by, by state law, they, the planning board has 65 days from accepting an application to make a decision. And then you can ask for an extension of that. Um, and, you know, if you're looking for more information or need it, but there is, there is a time limit. So that, um, is recognized, you know, in the state laws that you need some time. That's a, that's usually a couple of meetings at the very least. So we have that responsibility to do things fairly quickly, but it's also up to the applicant about how much information. The worst thing that can happen is that you accept an application that really isn't complete. And then it keeps going and going and going and going. That's kind of a waste of everybody's time to be honest. So I wanted to help. You guys are making recommendations like, don't accept it. It's not complete. It's missing these pieces. By law, we have to specify what those pieces are and explain that and make that part of the notice of decision about not accepting an application. But if the information's there, then you can review it and assess it and get our engineer to look at things quickly. And then, um, I think things will go pretty smoothly. So we want to try to work with people, um, and follow the, follow the rules too. So.
I, I don't know if anybody caught this in the news, but I think within the last week, the, the first, there was the first ruling by the state, um, appeals board, which is newly formed. And the towns, a decision of the town planning board was overturned. They denied. An application without providing a specific rule and, and the state, um, agency that. The new appeals board overturned the decision because there was no reason given for the denial. So, um, there is, you know, rather than appealing to the state Supreme Court, Superior Court at this point, there is a, a specific board. Um, appeal board that people can, that, um, applicants can appeal to now. And it's a much more expedited process. So we need to make sure that we're issuing reasons if we're going to deny, uh, an application. Or, or even, you know, e- even to deny for, you know, lack of information, you know, it's if we, if we don't have. If we accepted something as complete and you say, uh, we can't make a decision because it's not complete, then we shouldn't have accepted it. But, um, getting back to what Carl said, I'm, I'm okay without changing our policy. I think we're, we're doing a good job of judging that. So I was just bringing up the question, do we want to change our policies to add that? And I'm okay without doing that at this point. I just wanted us to have the discussion.
Sounds like everyone's good with as is and, um, just make sure that we're adjusting expectations as best we can at the outset that. Um, and I think the, the way this board has been deliberating on things, I think it does speak for itself. So, um. The applicant shouldn't come with the expectation that it's just an easy one night in and out. Type of deal. So it could be, but it might not be. Mike.
We've had a long meeting between five o'clock and now, and, um. I kind of want to push things along if we can. I think that, um. I was hoping to give a report to the planning board on the Plymouth Agricultural Zone Committee. But I think it would be best delivered in person if we're going to be meeting, uh, in a month. For our next work session. I would love to have some time for that.
Okay. Um, it sounds like we will be meeting in person for our next meeting. Um. It's like, well, because we've noticed it as a Zoom meeting, we'll have to do some sort of a hybrid.
Yeah. So. Yeah. And I was just going to, that was one thing I wanted to mention was June 17th. We listed it as a Zoom meeting, still not knowing what was happening. So I think the guidance now is going to be, we have to be. Notice it. So I'll have to figure that out, but, um. We certainly would want to offer it as both a Zoom meeting and in person. So whatever you as board members are comfortable with, you can come to town hall or do it on Zoom. And the same to the public. So.
Just in time for those really hot seats. Right.
And I have one last thing, Rebecca.
Yeah.
Just a real quick announcement that just emerged, um, two days ago. So if you've been downtown. Uh, notice that there's the for sale signs on what the, I think of as the Plymouth Book Exchange, others call it Newberry's. Building is gone. And so that was closed on, I think on June 1st and yesterday there was some, um. Some calls about it, whatever. Anyway, some, they're working on getting a building permit application, application for some renovations. Does not look like it's going to trigger site plan review. Um, as far as what I've been told is it's going to remain sort of some retail. There's a sign up that says kind of bringing back the old Newberry sort of style, some kind of a, I forget what it said, um. Variety store and cafe. Uh, and it's, so it's been purchased to the owner of the registry of deeds. I think it's AJ Newberry's LLC. Um, and one of the principals of Newberry's, um, is Alex Ray. So I know people have been talking about this and just thought I'd let you give you the update on that. So. They closed on it and the next day we're ready to go. So. Which, which is exciting, I think for downtown Plymouth to see some, something happening there. It's a big vacancy, obviously for some time. It's still going to have the housing in the back, but we does bring up again the question of, um, six units. Per building. So keep thinking about that one and that limitation. More to follow.
Right. Before we adjourn, are there any other public comments? All right. Who would like to do the honors this evening?
I'm going to wait for Mary Ann to do it.
Oh yeah. Mary Ann, that was supposed to be you two times in.
I didn't want to, you know, take it over, but I'm happy to make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second it.
All right. Um, I'll read the roll. Um, Mike Ahern.
Hi.
Carl.
Hi.
Mary Ann.
Hi.
Bill.
Hey.
John.
Hi.
Uh, Sue.
Hi.
And an I from me.